than we're used to. We'll take the first hour of the meeting and have that forum with some people up here, and then we'll go into the regular part of the council meeting. The following Monday, March 25th, there will be no council meeting that week. And then the following Monday, April 1st, we'll have a presentation for the Anacostia Watershed Society, and that'll be a briefing on Sligo Creek and Long Branch watersheds. We'll also have another discussion of the proposed charter amendment text on elections. The following Monday, April 8th, we'll have a public hearing on charter amendments for elections, and we'll have the presentation of the Akim City Manager's proposed FY14 budget. And then, as we're into April, we will generally be having Thursday meetings as well, which will be budget work sessions, currently scheduled for the 11th, 18th, and 25th. So that's just a couple upcoming items of interest. I don't have anything for the record, so at this point, we'll take public comment, and this is a chance for anybody who wants to speak to anything that's not on our regular meeting agenda this evening. So basically, anything that's not on the agenda this evening. And if you want to make your comments and come up to the podium and identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. People couldn't start? We'll get to Mr. Lovelace in a minute. Have to coordinate among yourselves.
Kathy Breckville, Woodland Avenue. My comment tonight is about communication between the city staff and the residents. And last week, about this time, we had a public hearing regarding the enterprise zone, and it was fairly contentious. And partly, that is because people felt they hadn't been notified. Now, of course, the city thinks they notified us because they had lots of things. They had Montgomery County, the Silver Spring Gazette, and the Long Branch Business League newsletter, and there was a mailing to people, owners, inside the zone, the city newsletter and the website. Okay. Oh, and Facebook. I'm going to start with Facebook, because I don't think that the city should consider Facebook official notification, because there are many of us who have sworn an oath never to look at it. Okay, so that's one thing. Now, the newsletter came on Friday, but the city website clearly says, Friday was the first, and the city website clearly says, if you don't get your newsletter by the 5th, call us. Well, the meeting was on the 4th, so probably a few people didn't get that, and even if they had, they couldn't have really dug into it very fully, because it was a weekend, and the people to call were not working over the weekend. Okay, as far as the Montgomery Gazette goes, a lot of people consider it a nuisance and have canceled their free subscription of three or four copies a week, because it ends up in the yard, in the mud, in the bushes, and often unreadable. Okay. So, a few people inside the zone were mailed a notice. And most of the time, the city does such a good job of ferreting out what needs to happen, but in this case, a mailed notice to the residents would have been the right thing to do, because this was a big deal to all the people that live around there. And I think it impacted people who don't even live that close to it because of potential traffic issues. Even if it stayed housing, that's a traffic issue. Okay. So, again, one more thing to say about this, which is that we're going to have some other areas where communications will come up, and I think that it would be helpful if the city would think about this beforehand. I'm involved in the pilot program for the food recycling, and if the city adopts that citywide, I can promise you that some people will feel angst about it. And so how that is communicated would definitely make the whole transition and process better for all, the city and the residents.
Hello. I'm returning about the issue of indefinite detentions without due process authorized under the NDAA. As you remember, the city council passed a city council resolution against this law last year. I'm here to let you know that there is now a bill before the Maryland Legislature.
Your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Thomas Nephew. I'm here, I'm from Tacoma Park, 7300 Berchley Avenue. So as you remember, the city council passed a city council resolution against the NDAA last year. There's now a bill before the Maryland Legislature, the Maryland Liberty Preservation Act of 2013, HB 558, which also opposes the NDAA's indefinite detention provisions. And similar to the resolution we proposed last year, the state bill would prohibit an agency of the state, a county of the state, employee of the state, and other members of, under the state, on the state payroll knowingly aiding an agency of the United States in the detention of a person in accordance with the indefinite detention provisions of the NDAA. So my request to you tonight is simply to each of you as individuals, especially to those of you who voted for, but also to those who did not for the resolution last year, to simply join a letter urging the chairman of the House Health and Government Operations Committee in Annapolis to allow this important bill to come to a vote. I've brought copies of the letter tonight for you to look at, and can contact you again when you've had a chance to read it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Which bill number was that?
HB 558.
We have copies here at the desk.
Is that a complete sentence?
I think he just ran out of air.
That doesn't appear to be correct. Do you know the sponsor?
Delegate Don Dwyer. HB 558, I'm quite sure is the, is the call number for it in Annapolis.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right.
Also goes by the Maryland Liberty Preservation Act. So thank you very much.
All can hear me fine? My name's Mary Ann Ryan, and I'm putting on a music festival here in Tacoma Park. It's scheduled for May 18th from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and it's something called a porch festival, which I learned last year when it was inspired by one of them up in Massachusetts. Basically, you put a number of acoustic bands on front porches. In talking with people at the House of Musical Traditions and some other people in Tacoma Park, I got a lot of interest in it, and so I've been generating interest. I am on Facebook. I also will have a website for it. And I'm involved in the music community here in Tacoma Park, and a number of musicians have expressed interest in performing. And so I had meetings with Ms. Ledlow and Ms. Carpenter a few weeks ago to talk about any kind of permits I would need, and we discussed that. So I'm just, I'm here to tell you all about that, and just wanted to let you know that that will be out there, and I have postcards, and I'm personally doing some fundraising on Indiegogo, which is mostly going towards having a good website for it. So you'll start to see signs around there about it, and I'll also be setting up shop at the farmer's market just to tell more people about it. So that's it.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
One call question. And so are you looking for bands, porches?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have, in fact, I have, I'll leave some here. I have multiple copies, so people can see what I'll be giving out to homes.
And your email address or contact information is on there?
TacomaPorch@gmail.com.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Lovelace.
Yes, my name, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. I want to, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I want to bring up the idea that people, how we can get people to participate in their city government and also in their city affairs. I mean, we should advertise a little bit more on maybe some of the other local channels so that they can know that it's going on if they don't watch Channel 13 or Channel 28 on ViOx or whatever it is, or the internet, but I think we should be able to advertise a little more about these events, like these socials, these festivals, and these other things. And I'd like to see more people coming down here to take part in their, participate in what's going on, you know, they may have something to say, you know, but, and not only is their participation just coming down here, but it's also going down to some of the demonstrations that we have in DC. Like we have one coming up on the 23rd, it's called Feed the People, Not the Pentagon. And we're having another one coming up on the drones, to stop the drones, those robot airplanes that have been killing innocent people overseas. And I couldn't believe some of the things I've heard about those, but I think if people got involved, they'd feel much better about themselves. I can do it, they can do it. Voting is another way of doing it, you know? Voting is another way of doing it. And other ways of doing it, too, are, you know, getting, getting your other neighbors involved. Maybe you can bring some neighbors down to the event, and that way you can be involved, too. You know, instead of just staying home and saying, it's too cold, it's too this, it's too that, it's too whatever. Well, it's not too whatever for anyone to do it, because I can do it in my condition. If I can do it in my condition, there's no reason why other people cannot do it. And plus, they did a special on me on the Tacoma TV, it's called We Are Tacoma. They did a special on me, and I'm hoping everybody can see it so they can learn what the rewards of community participation really are. They can really learn about it. And also, I want to say, I want to say, get well, Kay Daniels, I really miss you. I miss your seat over here being filled. I miss your giggle, and I miss your laugh. So please, Kay Daniels, please come back to our meeting. You know, and that's another thing you get out of the community participation. You get friendships, too. You get really long-lasting friendships. I mean, I've got some long-lasting friendships here, and I've gotten long-lasting friendships through the demonstrations I've participated in. As a matter of fact, they're my main backbone for support, you know, and they've helped me get the nursing assistance I got from Sandra's Nursing, you know, and I'm either starting to get them involved. You know, even Doris Thompson wants to come down to a demonstration sometime, and Dana wants to come down, so I'm starting to get people involved even more by just being involved myself and caring about my community. If I can do it, you can do it. So please, show that you care about your family and your community. Don't just sit back and wait until it's too late. Don't sit back and say, I should have done something, but I didn't. But please, stand up and be counted, and be proud, and be an American, and be a Tacoma man. Please, you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make any public comments? Okay, we will move along to council comments. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. My comment is not about a direct city matter, but one that is before the state legislature now, and that does affect us as Montgomery County and state of Maryland taxpayers. That is Senate Bill 631, House Bill 815, which is being sponsored in the Senate by Nancy King from the Montgomery County delegation. It would give Lockheed Martin a tax break to the tune of $450,000 a year, and require Montgomery County to retroactively pay back $1.8 million to Lockheed Martin. The basis of this is an exemption that would be created for corporate conference lodging of the type that Lockheed Martin has in Montgomery County from county-imposed hotel taxes. This is now opposed by a majority of the county council, Montgomery County council, and I voiced my own opposition to members of the Montgomery County delegation and the state legislature. And I wanted to alert others, others here who are listening to this also, the opposition
Council will stand in session. Roll call, please.
I'm not here asking you to stop growth.
A member of my family was killed with a gun. It can happen, and it does, and it wasn't accident.
I want for you to vote against these fares and cutting services.
I pass this five to two.
A lot can happen in a day.
I have gotten some feedback on the letter that this council sent out in support of transportation funding and for the Purple Line, and for something to save HUR funds, if that would go through. I did get positive comments back from Senator Victor Ramirez and from Nancy Navarro, which I thought was a good sign, but I think we need to continue the pressure this week. It's, it's a big issue. We did get a notice that there was a Montgomery delegation hearing on the 410 legislation, although that may be by accident and not really the case, and so we're trying to find out about that. We didn't think that, since it wasn't a local bill, that it would go through that process, but it sounds like there's different people handling things, and they're trying to make sure they're doing it the right way. So we'll find out and let you know.
And on that transportation bill, the sense that I got when I checked late this afternoon was that as soon as somebody offers an opinion about what's going on with that bill, 15 minutes later, it can all change.
Oh, sure.
But the, that one in particular.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's a fairly complex bill. There's another, you know, it's tied in with a couple big other sensitive topics. So I think there's, I'm not going to say backroom discussions, but there's lots of discussions going on, and my guess is it's going to be left to the last moment before we know what happens.
And we have a sense from the governor's staff that they recognize that municipalities got left out of the equation in the formulation of that bill. They have promised to rectify that. We don't know what form that'll be in. They've used language about holding us harmless, but my question is, harmless to what standard over what amount of time?
We want the standard from, what, 2009 or something?
We want, we want the fully funded formula. It kind of, it kind of harkens back to tax duplication issues with the county. We want the, at least, the formula that was fully funded, when it was fully funded. We want that amount, but we also don't want to be left out of the inflation factors built into the bill, because just as everybody else's costs go up, the state's costs go up for transportation projects, our costs will go up over time as well. And if they build in the escalator into the bill, and that passes, and we're left out, we're, we're left with the problem that the state is trying to avoid them having.
And is it the case that we may hear then on Wednesday about?
Hoping to hear Wednesday, because the governor is coming to the legislative committee, and he doesn't particularly want to be beat up in the legislative committee. He wants to be able to provide an answer. So I'm hopeful that Wednesday morning, we'll hear something about what they're intending.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Grimes.
You've reminded me that a constituent asked me to recognize from the podium that the bill that the state legislature is considering regarding Route 410 includes a paragraph that was not part of the city council resolution, but was added rather at the behest, with the assent of the council, at the behest of Historic Tacoma, and that paragraph reads, "The Department," that would be the State Highway Administration, "the Department may not spend any further funds for the construction of Maryland Route 410 through the city of Tacoma Park in Montgomery County." I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong section. The added section is that prior to beginning any non-routine maintenance in the Tacoma Park Historic District, the State Highway Administration shall submit the plans for the project to the Montgomery County Historic Preservation Commission for review. I believe we all share the opinion that this added paragraph that is the product of work by Historic Tacoma strengthens the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple other bills to mention. There was a municipal work group that was working closely with the, the joint committee that was looking at some potential changes to the ethics law. There had been indications for a good bit of the session that some recommendations from that task force were going to go forward in the form of a bill. It now sounds like very few of those are going to go forward for potential changes in the state ethics law. The HUR funding, the $15.4 million that the governor put in the budget, was looking pretty good. Last week, it was looking like it was in trouble, but as of Thursday, when we were down in Annapolis, Councilmember Mail and I were at the Montgomery County lunch for the delegates and their staffs. Word came that the amendment that was trying to strip out some of that money was withdrawn. So that has been recommended by the Transportation Subcommittee and the Full Appropriations Committee to the House. The House will be taking up second reading of the budget on Wednesday and third reading on Friday. So our anticipation is that the budget will go forward to the Senate with the full funding for this year that was in the governor's budget, which puts the highway user revenue money at 50% of the formula. The beverage container redemption centers bill has been heard, and not quite sure where it's going, but a lot of people testified against it, and it was very interesting when those of us who were at the MML Montgomery Chapter meeting with the county executive heard that presentation from some of the people pushing that, and basically, they got booed out of the room, with the idea being that it was going to hurt our recycling program and those of other localities as well, and take away some of the revenues that come from that, and leave us a lot worse off on our recycling programs. And finally, HB 929 is the bill that is supposedly going to be the vehicle for whatever changes come from the, looking at the speed cameras, and there have been many attempts to add some things to it, but it looks like it's going forward in ways that shouldn't make major changes in the program. So we'll see where that one is going, but so far, that one appears to be the vehicle. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that's it for the legislative update, so we will move to the presentation, and this is a preliminary report from the Brendel Group.
Hi, I just wanted to provide a little introduction for the folks coming after me. Just a reminder that last year, the city advertised our request for proposals for updating our greenhouse gas emissions inventory and developing Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, and the city selected the Brendel Group of the proposals we received and signed a contract in January. We had an introductory kickoff webinar in January, and this is the first of four scheduled site visits that'll take place through the contract period. So tonight's briefing will just be an opportunity for them to provide an overview on the efforts to date and a description of the planned work that'll take place. And they've got a PowerPoint ready to show this evening, and after a brief presentation, then we'll open it up to questions and answers. And with that, I just wanted to introduce Judy Dorsey and Seth Jansen from the Brendel
Welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
We're glad that you're here.
Thank you, we're glad to be here. So as I understand it, I'm not able to advance the slides from here, and I'll give a cue as we, as we need to from the back. Thank you, Darrell, for the introduction. As she said, I'm Judy Dorsey. I'm the founding president and principal engineer at Brendel Group. We're located out of Fort Collins, Colorado, but we serve customers nationwide, and we're thrilled to be here in Tacoma Park. And by way of next slide, please, you're seeing tonight a bit of a streamlined version of an outreach presentation that we're making tomorrow, is our first meeting with the committee on the environment, and also tomorrow, we have meetings with some business leadership. And earlier today, we kicked off the effort with the internal city staff team. So our purpose with this trip is to make introductions and to meet you in person, to provide an overview of the project, start talking about the engagement plan. We're very interested in your feedback tonight on what our proposed approach is in terms of engagement, so it was helpful to hear public input about getting people more involved in the community. The methodology that we plan to use, and then I'll turn it over to my colleague Seth. He is the project manager for this effort and has done He is the project manager for this effort and has done much of the heavy lifting in the last couple of months, really digging into the work to date, organizing that, mapping that in order to inform our approach. So with the next slide, our charge, as per the RFP and your direction, was to work in collaboration with the Committee on the Environment and the community at large and city staff to develop an Environmental Sustainability Action Plan that builds on your existing strengths and recognizes the significant planning that has been completed to date through the Local Action Plan and the Task Force on Environmental Action. That's our charge. And if we could advance, here's how we propose to accomplish that. As Daryl said, this was a competitive process. So the city had mapped out a five-step effort, tasks one through five that you see here. I will be your executive project manager with Seth being the day-to-day project manager. And the first five tasks were in the RFP, to create an evaluation methodology that city staff first approved before we went too far with our process. Then to evaluate existing programs, to analyze in task three, existing recommendations, recognizing the level of planning effort that had come before this activity, to update the greenhouse gas inventory in task four, and then to develop this plan. Recognizing, as we dug into our response and started to look at the significant level of engagement and prior planning, we decided to provide an option around implementation so that you could quickly, on the heels or in parallel to planning, have some resources set aside for those first priority implementation paths. So we'll include that in our effort, and it will include either developing one of the top strategies and bringing it through to completion or taking all of the strategies out to sort of that next level of implementation. You can see here that Seth and I were the lucky ones that got to come and meet with you in person, but we send regards from our colleagues back in Fort Collins as well as our partner GDS, which is on the ground here in Maryland and helping us to integrate to those state legislative issues, the utility issues and so forth, so that we get it right in terms of alignment with regional resources and activities across the state. So with that and the next slide, in terms of the engagement plan, there are different audiences that we're working with. Daryl's leading up the city staff and core team. And I wanted to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Tim Mail, who was involved in the selection process and who's also serving as liaison from council on this team. So he was at our meeting today as well. That's hugely valuable, and our experience working with local government is rare for us, honestly, to even have an audience with council like this face-to-face at the kickoff and multiple times throughout this nine-month process. So we think that you already are off on the right foot in terms of us having access to you and to hear your input on this process as well as the city leadership. So that's the first audience that we'll be working most directly with on a regular basis. And then we have, of course, broader city staff and stakeholders, key people that will be affected by this plan, both within the city staff and in the community that we'll be reaching out to more one-on-one in terms of interviews and some of our interviews tomorrow with business leadership is a case in point. Then you nominated the members of the Committee on the Environment in January of this year. I just had a chance today to review the charge to that committee. It's very strongly aligned, obviously, with this effort, and we meet with them for the first time tomorrow night. We'll have four meetings with them. We'll do follow-up work with them as needed, whether surveys or one-on-one interviews. We've also set up a Basecamp website for the members of the Committee on the Environment. You're, of course, invited and welcome to participate in that as well so that we have good, strong sharing and collaboration and workspace on the Basecamp website as progress, as strategies unfold and we have progress and we can, people can start to see interim results. And then finally, of course, the public. And from the public engagement side, we will be having an open house in July or September, and we'll be meeting with other commercial and neighborhood organizations. We had discussion this earlier today with the city staff on identifying those groups in terms of proactively reaching out to. And then, of course, you, a city council. So again, I reiterate my appreciation for the opportunity to meet with you at the beginning and throughout the process, and we look forward to your feedback tonight. Next slide, please. Process-wise, this is a nine-month plan. As Daryl said, we went under contract in mid-January. We are coming four times about every other month between now and September, with the final plan being delivered to you at the end of October. And each of these visits then has a lot of associated meetings with the different engagement groups that we identified, not just the Committee on Environment and staff, but then additional targeted outreach. And tomorrow we're on data gathering mode, for example, to continue to round out the greenhouse gas inventory data collection. So while this is introductory, each time you'll see this build, and you'll see at the next meeting some of our beginning recommendations. It's an iterative process where we ask for feedback. We will start to quantify those strategies and see how they contribute to goals and start to get into an iterative dialogue with these different groups to have this plan integrate to a cohesive whole. So next slide, please. The first task, as you saw earlier, was for us to get our methodology down and to iterate with the city to be sure that we were on the right track. And in terms of methodology, we, the RFP actually asked for a methodology for quantifying and comparing strategies to each other. And we felt that is important, but went on to say there are two other important parts about the methodology, not just this first bullet on how to quantify strategies, but the second point, how to evaluate, aggregate those and evaluate their contribution towards your differing goals, to know if you still have gaps for quantitative targets, let's say around greenhouse gas reductions by a certain timeline. So then the third thing was a methodology, though, to have us all pull together as a cohesive framework so that we know that the strategies are aligning to the goals and that we have strong implementation plans that tap the unleveraged resources and within the community to implement those. So that was already completed. City staff reviewed that. That was approved, and now we are in the midst of tasks two and three. If you could please advance the slide. Thank you. So what's really great is we know we have an active and engaged Committee on the Environment that have already had a couple of meetings, and they proactively reached out to us in advance of this trip, and we received a list of questions from them that we'll be discussing tomorrow. One of the questions had to do with the ICLI Star Communities Assessment Tool, which is from the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, ICLI, and that's Sustainability Tools for Assessing and Reading Communities, the first bullet that you see here. So we have worked with other communities on ICLI Star, and we're prepared to talk with the Committee on the Environment about that and pros and cons and how that fits in to this effort. Similarly, the Sustainable Maryland certification is of interest to that committee. We've had a preliminary look at that. We also noted that your charge to the committee was to assist with environmental sustainability to council, but also to assist with sort of associated certifications, so we understand that's something of interest to you. And then ultimately, though, we're currently proposing a customized approach that builds on the work of the Task Force for Environmental Action. We liked the categories there. We think it aligns well with the charge that you gave to the Committee on the Environment, and we feel like it still provides the flexibility to integrate these national frameworks and also then the Maryland, Sustainable Maryland certification into that. So we're currently planning to use this third approach, which is customized, builds on what you've already done, but at least recognizes and checks these national frameworks that we're not missing any important topics. So with the next slide, based on the input so far, we understand the priorities to have basically right now five focus areas that we're starting on, buildings, climate, energy, transportation, and waste, recognizing the overarching energy in greenhouse gas, greenhouse gas emissions being a priority. So not that air quality and city operations and habitat and stormwater aren't important, they are, that the first emphasis, emphasis is on these five focus areas. So with the next slide, when we say framework, what we're looking to do is show for each of those focus areas what the long-term goals look like, what are the short-term, three-to-five-year interim targets, and what are the strategies to reach those goals. At the strategies level, then, we start drilling down into almost like many project management plans, if you will, to help city staff build the programs to execute on those strategies. And that's what's evaluated on an annual or a more ongoing basis, actions, priorities, and opportunities, metrics and indicators, and some form a platform for reporting and revising the plan along the way. So this is what we're, what we mean when we're talking about a framework. It's showing the breadth of topic areas covered as well as in that depth of analysis to make sure that you're executing on those performance targets. So with the next slide, we show this more process-wise as an iteration between top-down meets bottom-up. And oftentimes in community planning, we've seen communities set goals, let's say, to align with their state or county around greenhouse gas emissions reduction by a certain time horizon below a certain baseline. But the communities don't necessarily have a strong understanding of how attainable that is and if the strategies they put into place will get them far enough, get them there, or what the costs or cost savings will be, and therefore how to motivate public-private partnerships and what kind of investment opportunities there are, et cetera. So our plan here is to kind of take a lot of what you have in terms of policy direction already well-established and help to provide some of that engineering and quantitative rigor, if you will, to better understand the quantitative impacts, environmental impacts and cost impacts of reaching these goals. And so from a bottom-up standpoint, we're building that with the baseline information that we're gathering, we're evaluating programs, we're analyzing recommendations already made. And we'll, you'll start to see us in future meetings, come back, we'll have these placeholder goals, we'll go look at the strategies, evaluate them, and we might need to iterate, either add more strategies or adjust goals and so forth. So we represent this as an iterative process of top-down, bottom-up, hoping to have what we would say is a closing the loop or vertically integrated between your policy direction and on-the-ground movement in terms of individual citizen participation. So with the next slide, I am going to turn it over to my coworker Seth. As I said, he has been the one, we have, as you saw on the slide, there are five of us at Brendel Group who are working on this. He's been leading us in terms of gathering the information to date, reviewing it, organizing it, and then we've made some first interpretations. So he's here to share that with you.
And just before you step back, let me just ask one question, and it might be that this is the right time to ask it, and it might be that you say, no, let's do the other piece, and then we'll get to that.
Sure.
As I've been listening to you, what I've been thinking about is, well, the first thought was, well, gee, I'm assuming that we're going to have this presentation available for people to see to follow what's going on, so I'm assuming it's going to be linked to the, to the meeting. But that led me to a question about, has there been thought given to kind of how this whole thing will track, where the public who are interested or anybody else can go to our website and find things, the tracking process for this? How do you do that with other jurisdictions? Have there been talks about that here?
Yes. The website that I described, the Basecamp tool, is meant more for those actively engaged than the public at large. So we still do need to figure out all the communications channels for public engagement, aside from, obviously, the open house and so forth. But yeah, in other communities, we've posted that to website, a sustainability website or wherever it is most logically housed for the local government. So we would still need to work that out with city staff.
So it sounds like there will be the Basecamp website for people into the nitty-gritty details and keeping track of that, and then there will be a broader effort to kind of cover it for the public to find it at a higher level.
Exactly.
Okay, just wanted to check that. Thanks.
Yeah, and if there are any other questions on process, I'm happy to answer those, or we can take them at the end as Seth shares the preliminary results.
Okay.
Thank you.
So once we get down to the individual strategy level, the individual action level, we'll be looking at a number of metrics in terms of how we evaluate those strategies. And we've looked back to the Local Action Plan from the year 2000, the Task Force Report from 2010, as well as the RFP and the information the city provided there to kind of get a reference for the kind of information you're looking for as you evaluate these actions and strategies. So you'll see here on your monitor is a list of things we typically look at in other communities, and what you've looked at in the past is not so different, but what we will be doing is trying to take it to a higher level of quantification. So where previous reports have used, you know, low, medium, and high, a little bit more of a qualitative set of metrics, we'll be trying to drill down to actual numbers using data from Tacoma Park on your energy use, your demographics, single-family and multifamily housing breakdowns, typical energy use intensities, and this kind of information to really evaluate the benefits as well as the costs and savings from each of these strategies. You can also see there's a number of metrics there toward the bottom that are a little more socially related, social justice impacts, the kind of staff resources required to implement the strategies, and we also know that those are particular areas of interest for Tacoma Park from the reading that we've done. Next slide, please. So kind of moving on then from task one, the methodology and how we'll approach the structure of the project, to task two, which was to look at existing actions, existing practices and programs in the community, what's already going on, and what kind of foundation are we starting from. In looking at the long list of documents that you see here, we've identified over 90 programs that are either currently in progress or have already been completed that could relate to the topic areas in this plan. And I won't go into any detail on the mapping of those unless you want to see it. We have some extra slides we could look at later. But basically what we're trying to do is identify gaps, areas where there's additional opportunities, where this plan can come in and try to either make what you're doing more effective or fill a complete gap that may exist today. So on that note, if you go on to task three, we're also looking at all the actions that have already been proposed to date. We recognize that Tacoma Park was really a leader in greenhouse gas accounting for communities. Your first inventory was very early on in that process of community inventories back in 99 and 2000. And since then, between that effort and the task force, excuse me, the task force effort in 2010, there really has been a lot of community effort put into trying to address these issues. So we want to make sure that we're recognizing that effort, that we're looking for the viable strategies that may still exist in those plans and helping to move those forward as appropriate or augment them as needed. Next slide, please. And so in that process of looking at existing practices and proposed practices, I've kind of organized them into five key levers for the community, and these are the levers that have the biggest impact potentially on your greenhouse gas emissions. Your residential, commercial, and multifamily buildings, obviously, building energy use is a big contributor to, to energy consumption in general as well as greenhouse gas emissions. And we separate those buildings by type because the method of reaching out to those populations and the kind of services you might provide or programs you might reach out with are different depending on the type of building. We're also looking at energy supply. Obviously, that's a more challenging one for a municipality that doesn't have their own utility, but there are some opportunities there, and I think the city and really Maryland in general has done a good job of leading in that area with your participation in the renewable greenhouse gas, or excuse me, the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, the Renewable Portfolio Standard at the state level, and the city's done a great job of leading there as well with your solar installations and participation in renewable energy credit purchases. And so for all of the actions that we're looking at, we're kind of seeking a way to organize them that allows us to spot the gaps. There's really a lot of information there, as I said, over 140 individual items that we're trying to understand and figure out how they fit together. So you can see some of the ways we've kind of organized them there. Does it relate to the city's leadership in a particular area? Is it policy and planning? More discovery-oriented? Does it help people in the community with general education about a topic? Or does it help them with, guide them in a specific way, like an energy audit might for a home or a business? We've tried to identify the actions that are already leading to implementation in the community as well as motivating it, either through fees, excuse me, through incentives, grants, or even disincentives in some cases. And then there's a number of recognition programs out there, especially at the state level, for green businesses that are another part of this whole picture of really delivering on sustainability. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Fourth task is kind of ironically placed at task four because in some respects, it is almost more of the first thing that we need to do out of the gate, and it's well underway, and that's revising your greenhouse gas inventory. It was originally done in 99 and 2000, and it has been revisited a number of times since then, including at least a partial redo in 2010, I think, for the task force on environmental action, but we're going to go ahead and repeat it again so we can see where our current status is today as you move forward. We're trying to harmonize what's been done in the past so that you have an apples-to-apples comparison, so that you can say where are we in 2011 or 2012 relative to where we were in 2010 or 1990 for that matter. But we're also trying to update it to reflect what has been a really changing landscape in community inventory protocols over the last five years. We're finally starting to see some guidance. Where communities like Fort Collins, where we're from, and Tacoma Park had to break ground in this area 10 and 13 years ago, other communities have finally caught up, and there are actually guidance documents on how to get this done now. So we're going to make sure that we're aligning with those but still giving you the information to compare to what you've done in the past. Next slide, please. And so task five is kind of a placeholder task for actually developing the plan, so there's, you've seen really the content of that here. Task six, then, was, as Judy mentioned, something that we recommended. Seeing all the work that you've previously done, we didn't want to just give you another plan. We wanted to give you the tools you really need to implement, and whether that's really detailed implementation plans for individual actions or actually pursuing a particular strategy more toward completion. So you can see some examples here, ranging all the way from an individual strategy like a voluntary business program for, for participating in sustainability in general or reducing greenhouse gas emissions, down to a more general, developing implementation plans around a broader set of strategies like Judy mentioned. So we have budget and scope and time set aside to do this so that we can really get you off on the right foot when the project ends in October. Next slide, please. And so in May, as Judy said, we'll be back roughly every two months for the remainder of the project. In May, we're planning to come back with complete greenhouse gas inventory and forecast, preliminary quantification of the priority strategies that are coming out of your existing programs and what they'll continue to contribute to greenhouse gas emission reductions, the proposed programs that we think should be moved forward from all the work that's already been done, as well as starting to insert some best practices from other communities nationwide that we think are appropriate and a good fit for Tacoma Park. So that's the kind of information we'll be bringing back in May, and then looking for input from all the stakeholder groups we've mentioned on whether these are appropriate and helping you to meet your goals, what the remaining gaps and opportunities may be, and then starting to talk about those implementation priorities. And I believe that is the last slide. So thank you for your time, and we look forward to your questions.
Thank you. I'm particularly encouraged by your saying that you want to get us moving toward implementation. That, that last step really has a lot of allure for, I think, a lot of people because I think people could fairly say we've been talking about it for a long time. We had, we had some implementation of things early on, but, and we have other things, but they're kind of disjointed, and it'll be good to have all of this pulled together and an overall plan and an understanding of the gaps and moving toward implementation. Councilmember Meil.
Sure, thank you, and thank you for allowing me to join the meeting this afternoon and the city staff. I think this is, you know, really going to help us, and I appreciate the work you've done up till now, and I've mentioned this to my colleagues before, but I found the other planning documents that you've produced for other communities as well as implementation to be, to be extremely comprehensible. And so it's, it's the sort of thing that I think would really help our community in terms of everybody, everybody getting on the same page, as it were. I wanted to ask a set of specific questions. I know you talked about greenhouse gas reductions and evaluating strategies associated with greenhouse gas reduction. Would it also be possible to look at a goal like reducing energy costs in the community and evaluating costs in that way, or do you just look at program costs in terms of bang for the buck?
We certainly do look at program costs in terms of bang for the buck, but we're also very focused on energy cost savings in terms of the energy that a citizen might save or a business might save and what that does for them on their utility bill. Now, obviously, with energy supply, we can't necessarily get into comparing the cost of different supply options since that's largely out of your control anyway, but we can talk about distributed renewables in the community, power purchase agreements, and the influence that those kind of supply options might have on cost as well. So yeah, payback to citizens and payback on the private investment as well as the public investment is very much something we're interested in.
Thanks, and I just, I have four other points that I think I'll get through pretty quickly.
Sure.
Do them all. Judy, you had mentioned earlier the issue of sustainability ranks and the two different ranking systems, and just to repeat what I said earlier, you know, I think, I'd really like to see us take advantage of your expertise, and I think particularly with Sustainable Maryland, that's something that our Committee on the Environment can, can probably handle, that, that system is designed for, you know, it shouldn't take a, a contract firm, I think, to help us get through that. So I'm really excited about, as the mayor said, having you guys focus on implementation. And if the STAR system, the STAR ranking system, you know, influences what we do, that's great, but I wouldn't want to see it take up too much of your time to have us get certified there. I think the long-term goals piece is really fantastic. That was the top line in one of your slides, and, you know, the city has a strategic plan. We refer back to it very frequently, and this is, this plan is an opportunity to really add some detail that would complement our, our other strategic plan in this, in this space of environment, sustainability, and, and energy. And so, you know, those long-term goals are going to be really important, and your expertise in helping us set those is really key. Let me just look at this. Bang for the buck is really important. Could you go back to the slide where you have the, the actions, the five or six actions at the bottom half of the slide?
Oh, I think that was it.
Right there. So on this slide, these are seven or eight categories, seven categories, you know, lead, policy and planning, discovery, guide, et cetera. It's my sense the city has done a great job in leading, and, you know, solar panels up there and a number of other actions that we've taken, our vehicle fleet, et cetera. So that's an area where I feel like we've, we've done a pretty good job. And to some extent, policy and planning, you know, we have a, we have an exceptional tree standard, our stormwater plan is, is moving forward quickly, and I think is seen as our, our stormwater utility as well as our planning are constantly looked at in the state as, as models. And it's this area around, you know, guided or targeted education, you know, to specific sectors of the community that could be really important. That might be really important for multifamily buildings as well as commercial sectors. And then implementation and motivation. I don't know that I completely see the distinction between those two, but, you know, implementation and motivation are really going to be important for us. And that's it, that's my last comment, so.
And I'll just add the last point there, recognition. I think that's something that the city does a particularly bad job of, is recognizing not only what the city has accomplished but what individuals have accomplished, and so that's something that we could do a better job of. And anything in here, if it's, you know, then, then that may not be all of what you're talking about in terms of recognition, but it's a piece that speaks to me when I see Other comments? Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you for being here, all the way from Colorado. I hope you're, you find the climate to your liking today. I'm kind of looking at this from a layperson's perspective, thinking in terms of sort of Mr. and Mrs. constituent. What's happening to my mic? Okay, my mic is now on, I'll try again. I'm looking at this from the standpoint of how Mr. and Mrs. constituent might see this. We've spent a couple of years, really, it was, when this whole idea of trying to put, build in a sustainability coordination component into our city government was first really seriously debated up here. And that evolved, as you probably know by now, out of the, the work of the task force. But here we are, two years later, and we're just beginning to kind of spend the money to, to get some, get this actually going. And so it's going to take you guys nine months, and we're going to end up with a lot of information that's going to be undoubtedly very helpful to us. But I guess when it's all said and done, if I'm a taxpayer sitting out there, reading about this and hearing about this, what is this going to look like to me in terms of, is, is this going to, is this study going to speak to me? I mean, I realize it's going to be speaking to the members of the city council and our staff here and to members of the Committee on the Environment, because a lot of them are on that committee because they have a fairly sophisticated understanding of a lot of the stuff that's in, in these slides and all the work that you kind of do. But I'm, I'm thinking about other people, and you refer to it here, thankfully, you know, the public. What is this, what do you hope that this, this product that you'll be producing here this year will mean to residents as well as property owners, whether they're commercial property owners or homeowners and that sort of thing? I mean, will it be a readable thing? Will it look like there's something here that I know that we, I want to support that the city wants to do or something, or is it something that, I would look at this and be able to say, well, here's something I can do for my own energy savings? Can you give me kind of, can you characterize what, what it might look like from that point of view?
Yeah, absolutely. So for a number of the recent community energy plan or climate action plans that we've done, we've essentially done a two-path deliverable. One for city staff and those who are very involved with this topic on a regular basis, your Committee on the Environment types who have that knowledge and want to dig into that level of detail. In parallel to that, we've produced basically a layperson's plan. Here's what this plan means, here's what it can do for you, and here's some clear steps that you can take to participate. So really trying to convey those benefits and the reason for doing this kind of work in a, in a clear way and, and a way that actually motivates action and not just, not just conveying the information, but actually hopefully, hopefully giving people a place to start and get involved.
If I may, there, building on that, I heard almost three questions from you in that.
Okay.
And the, the end was, what does the product look like and will the citizen understand it? And to Seth's point, we have two different documents for two different audiences, but it also depends on what the strategies are in the plan and how they affect the individual citizens. So what we'll be having is discussion with the Committee on the Environment and city staff and in the public open house about behavior change, for example. So the city has direct control over a small portion, actually, of your community's greenhouse gas emissions. You have influence over a lot larger portion of those emissions. And some of the leading cities are getting pretty innovative in how they're engaging everyday citizens and homeowners or residents, schoolchildren, faith-based organizations, even if we could tap the Tacoma Porch music venue. Those are all great ways to start communicating about behavior change and energy. We've had communities where they're doing literally neighborhood-scale living room chats where they have champions that are going out and helping to promote the programs and rebates and things, it's more peer-to-peer networking. So it depends on the actual strategies in the plan and the level of outreach, if you will, and implementation support to those groups. Then the third question I kind of heard in there a little bit was this question around staffing, and I wanted to make a quick comment about that, which is sort of a chicken and the egg. Once you have the plan, then you'll, we also in parallel are looking at the capacity of the community to implement the strategies and whether that capacity exists within city staff or needs to be hired, but at least now you'll have a more specific job description of what that person would be doing and/or, especially if we're talking about some of these more community-based strategies that could, there are parts of these, the plan implementation could reside in, you know, development organizations or foundations, et cetera, neighborhood groups and so forth. So at the end, we want to not just create a plan of what, but an assessment of the organizational capacity and where that resides, if that, if that helps elaborate a bit.
Yeah.
Because I think it is important to know what the end product looks like, but what's in that end product will also drive the impact to the individual residents in Tacoma Park.
Yeah, I, I'm really glad to hear you say what you said. That's sort of, that's understandable, it makes sense to me. Seems, seems to me that it's the sort of thing that residents, many of whom really do take pride of being Tacoma Parkians, if that's the word, and are environmentally conscious at, at some level. And, and I think this sort of thing could generate enthusiasm and excitement, you know, from the level of the elementary school kids right on up to some of our senior citizens throughout the whole community, and I, I look forward to that. It sounds like something that, that could really educate people, stimulate them, and get them really talking about it. I think also the last thing you said, Ms. Dorsey, was the idea of helping us figure out capacity for carrying forward after the work is, your work is done. Two years ago, we said, we need, the, the TFEA report said, we need a sustainability coordinator. We all sort of said, okay. And then we spent the next two years trying to figure out, or a year and a half, well, what is that, who is that, or what is that? And, and we realized that it meant, everybody heard those terms, it meant something different. Hopefully, by the end of your work, we'll have it sort of in a box that we can sort of label and figure out, you know, if we do want to build capacity within the city government, this is what we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here. In my ward, I have large multifamilies and a lot of garden-style apartments. I would ask that when you guys can finish your report, that you can include those people, those owners that have a small building, how they can make minor changes or implement energy efficiency, but also tenants, what tenants can do. Because a lot of times, the council, we forget that there are a lot of tenants and they want to participate in things like this and, you know, but they don't know how. And it'd be great to see some type of action plan that's specifically geared towards tenants. Thank you.
Councilmember Meil.
Thank you. And just sort of following up on that, is it, it's what, you know, 40 or 50% of our residents that live in multifamily buildings? Is that about right? So that's clearly a significant share of the community, and I agree with Councilmember Smith that, that it's, it's important to make sure that this, this is really applicable to them. Following up on Councilmember Schultz's comment, I wonder if you could provide a copy of one of those plans, one of, you know, whatever examples you guys are most proud of or you think are most relevant to our community, that, you know, more of the expert and more of the layperson's version, and send them to all of us or send them to the city clerk and, and, and the clerk could forward them. Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then the last question I had was, when we looked at the proposals, I remember there was, we talked a lot about, or you, you talked about this option of, of moving forward with implementation, essentially doing a little bit less, I think, on the work on the greenhouse gas inventory side, and then focusing on really like building out one particular project or program. And is that still the intent that, I think you, there was the implementation line that started in May or June here? Is that the idea that if we can, if we can make enough progress, if the council can sort of come together around some of your initial ideas as well as the community, that then we could really flesh out one, one area? Okay.
Yeah, if you'd like, we can elaborate on that a little bit more if we went back to that slide.
I think that'd be helpful for, for folks. Because one of the things we talked about a, a year or whenever it was ago was, you know, this, okay, so then we'll get another plan and then what?
Right.
So that idea was sort of exciting.
Right, and, and we don't like that either, so we really like the momentum of implementation that helps pull the rest of the plan forward, and that was the intent with this optional task six. And the way that we accommodated it within the overall budget, to Tim's point, is in greenhouse gas inventory. greenhouse gas inventories, it can get almost arcane to a point where you're doing accounting past point of meaningful contributions to your overall. So we looked at a basic greenhouse gas inventory that meets protocol, but then also moving towards implementation. And we had three different ideas here. The first is we had fully implement one strategy. For perspective budget-wise, this task was about 25% of our overall budget, so that gives you a sense. For the amount that we budgeted, we can completely implement turnkey, a voluntary business program, one that might be like the Fort Collins Climate Wise Program as an example, or a behavior change program. To your question earlier, what does this look like for citizens? And so you might look at ParkCityGreen.org, which is a website where residents can upload their utility bills, and then they can actually do what-if calculations, what if they remove the, this is Utah, Park City, Utah, the ski rack from their Subaru for the summer, and how much money will they save in gas? But then we also know, can calculate how much that saves towards the community's greenhouse gas emissions. So those are two examples of the size of turnkey programs for the budget that we, but there are other examples. So if you find, for example, on the tenant issue in multifamily housing, we could go find a great national program, we don't reinvent, we implement it here, we'd, that, those are some examples. Or we could implement the first steps of priority measures. By that, we mean actual getting down into detailed program design, like the Denver Energy Challenge is a program that we're involved in. There's a lot more detailed design and RFPs, if you have to procure services to implement the Denver, a program like a Denver Energy Challenge. So kind of taking a program through those first implementation steps, or across the board, going deeper into each strategy in terms of these, like I described earlier, mini implementation plans, who, what, when, how, budget cycles, council agendas, where we, council agendas where we really start putting that into more detailed motion around a project management plan for implementation. So that's roughly the budget and three different paths. We don't want to commit to that yet until we can get feedback and you have some early results to work with, but that's what we would love. You know, something like a behavior change program can go hand-in-hand with a plan in Park City. That's what it was. It was their climate plans called Save Our Snow. Save Our Snow was launched about the same time as ParkCityGreen.org, which then gave citizens an actual tool to go work on their personal greenhouse gas inventories and behaviors and practices.
And Mayor, just one more note. I note that former TFEA co-chair Steve Davies is in the audience, and if he wanted to speak, I don't know if he does or not.
You want anything you want to add?
I just wanted to.
You got it.
Thank you, Steve Davies, Westmoreland Avenue, Tacoma Park. I did want to ask whether the rental group's going to be trying to quantify health benefits of certain actions, health benefits in the community, such as, you know, reduction of air pollution or reduction of greenhouse gases, that type of thing. I mean, I was struck by the fact that in the metrics, I didn't see the word "health", or, you know, I saw the word "benefits", but cost efficiency and other things, but I don't, I think we have, can't lose sight of the fact that one of the big goals in the strategic plan is, you know, livable community, healthy areas for people to enjoy, hopefully clean air.
I would just say, I think that's a great point. Those are a preliminary list of metrics, and we really are looking for the city's input and the input of those who've been involved in the past to define what we're going to evaluate there. So that's certainly something we can do, the quantified health benefits of reducing particulates and other air pollution locally. So, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Steve. Councilmember Grimes.
One comment that comes to me, which is on the, one of your slides talked about action points, and one of them was a direct action that the city can take, another was motivations, incentives, whatever. And there's a third way there, which is that I think that we would definitely like to encourage, let's call them, public partnerships with community groups and organizations that we can fund or simply encourage to carry out a portion of this work for us.
Good point. Could we grab that slide real quick, just so I can clarify? I think it was that five-by-seven where it had five, there we go, five levers and the actions relate to? Is this, you're referring to perhaps there's an eighth thread, if you will, or area that's more around partnerships? Great. Thank you. Good point. We will add that.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you all very much, and we look forward to working with you.
Likewise. Thank you.
We'll take a short break and come back for our voting session. And the first item is a resolution supporting the redesignation of a portion of Tacoma Park as a Maryland Enterprise Zone and authorizing submission of a joint application with Montgomery County for the redesignation. And we have city staff here to walk us through this.
Hi, I'm Roz Grigsby, Community Development Coordinator for the city. We are looking at a joint application between Montgomery County and the city of Tacoma Park to reauthorize the Enterprise Zone. The Enterprise Zone has existed since 2003. It's a 10-year designation. It expires the end of this fiscal year, the end of June. And it is a tool to encourage economic development. The city is somewhat limited in the toolbox that we have to encourage these kinds of things, and this is something we can do. The approach is through property tax credits and income tax credits for job creation and property enhancement. And the city is, the areas of the city that are part of this are eligible in two ways. One is that it's a state priority funding area. And the second is that the areas either meet or abut census tracts that meet the measures for low-income poverty, median family income. And so in these instances, the two, there were several measures that were eligible, and the two that we qualify for are on low-income poverty levels and median family income. The low-income poverty level is at least 13.1% of the families in a census tract must be below the poverty level. And the median family income is that at least 70% of the households must earn less than 80% of the median family income for the county. And so the census tracts included in this either meet those criteria individually or abut census tracts that meet those. When we look at the 10-year experience of the Enterprise Zone to date, some questions have been raised that it didn't seem to generate enormous amounts of activity, and I want to point out two things. One is that because of these criteria that focus on disadvantaged areas, development doesn't happen in disadvantaged areas in the same way that it does in booming areas. That's why we have an Enterprise Zone, knowing that development might need some encouragement, and that's job creation and that's property enhancement in areas that may not easily come to that on their own. The second is that, the second point I wanted to make is that the global worldwide recession that's been going on since the end of 2007 has put a significant damper on redevelopment in all kinds of ways, in all kinds of places, not the least of which here. And so I think when we look at the dates of activity, prior to 2007, there were a number of use, business owners and property owners making use of these tax credits through the Enterprise Zone. Then there was a period of really nothing happening at all, and it is now starting to come up with it. We have added eight new properties in Tacoma Park to the existing Enterprise Zone designation. There are four on New Hampshire Avenue, a small part of 7676 New Hampshire at the intersection with University. The parking lot that the Crossroads Farmers Market uses was, is a separate parcel and was not included originally. The Tacoma Rec Center, which is owned by MNCPPC, has been included, and the 7333 and 7401 New Hampshire that Tacoma overlooked properties have included. Those are all, have been rezoned under the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan to be mixed-use zoning now. And so including them in the Enterprise Zone is a way to incentivize possible development down the road. Remember, the designation is a 10-year period, so we're trying to look long-term at the kinds of things that we hope to have happen here. There were four additional properties added to the application. They're all on the 8600 block of Flower Avenue, the even side. And they are to be designated mixed-use, CRTs, via the Long Branch Sector Plan. And that all kicks in when the purple zone, purple line is funded. I guess if you have questions, I'd be happy to talk about it.
And what's not included?
A property that was in the earlier draft that is not included in the resolution or the application is 6501 Poplar Avenue. It's the Washington McGlaughlin School. It was included because it is a underutilized Daral Act property, and the opportunity to look at something that might encourage some enhancements to that building and to the uses there seemed like a good idea. It's been excluded for a couple of significant reasons. One is that it's a very large property, part of which is wooded, and the Enterprise Zone application is structured such that it was to include all the property or none of the property. We couldn't include only part of one individual parcel. And the community was very clear that they were not interested in seeing, you know, that wooded area be incentivized in any way for anything other than what it is now.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I have two questions for you. You said that one benefit of an Enterprise Zone is that it's a state priority funding area. What does that mean?
It's designated from the state level as such.
Priority funding by whom?
Well, the State Department of Planning gives that designation.
And by definition, all municipalities are state priority funding areas.
So it helps, that designation helps the area just outside of Tacoma Park. Many of the various ways to get different kinds of park enhancement programs, different community development grants, et cetera, give preference to areas that are within the priority funding zone, priority funding area.
All right. Second question. Prince George's County has a large Enterprise Zone area that was, it looks like designated in 2009. It's very hard to tell from the map, but it looks like it might include certain areas on the Prince George's side of New Hampshire Avenue. Do you know whether it does? And, well, start with that.
I don't know. I'm sorry.
So far as, you know, the city, has the city had any interactions with Prince George's, I guess, Ms. Ludlow, you know, back in 2009 about an Enterprise Zone on their side?
I don't remember that discussion.
Okay. So the last question along those lines, it's only every 10 years. You can't amend the Enterprise Zone after it's been designated for a 10-year period, so far as you know?
To my knowledge, it's a 10-year designation. I don't know if it can be amended.
Yeah. I'll just make the remark, it would have been interesting to have Prince George's include their side of New Hampshire Avenue, and if there's any possibility of extending it to that, then it would be, and it's not there already, it would be a good tool to have for the new effort. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
According to map number six here, it does look like the Enterprise Zone includes both sides of New Hampshire, the Montgomery County and the Prince George's County side of New Hampshire down in the area from Eastern Avenue going all the way up to East West Highway.
I think that's the boundary of the right-of-way, although it shouldn't, because that section's within Prince George's County.
That's not what the legend says. It says this is the, the Enterprise Zone boundary is the red.
I think, I think we'll need to find out if that's a map-making error or not.
I think that's a map-making error.
Because I would imagine it is, because if this included part of Prince George's County, Prince George's County would have to be part of the hearing process and the approval process.
Okay. Okay. I just, I guess, I think it would make, maybe we should get that clarified and get these maps clarified.
I'll do that.
Because if it turns out that it is, well, guess what?
Well, great.
I mean, you know, it probably, from a, from a, I mean, it would make sense to have both sides of New Hampshire Avenue in, because there's generally nothing to choose between, I mean, both of them, that the demographics, I'm sure, would greatly support it being an Enterprise Zone on the PG side.
I think that's right. I think the map is, I think what they're trying to show is only the road of New Hampshire itself, not the properties on it.
Was, this was prepared by the, map was prepared by the?
The county planning department did the maps.
I'm curious to know, I understand why the McLaughlin School property on Poplar Avenue was pulled out. And part of it, I guess, was because of fears of the nearby residents on the wooded side of the backside of that property, that this would incentivize development and all that. And so it was just easier at this point in history just to take that out. But I just would like you to kind of talk a little bit about, about why, you know, why it was thought to be a good idea, because I think the intentions of putting it in to the Enterprise Zone were well, were well thought through. And I'd like you to kind of talk about that and what the potentials from the staff's point of view are for that property, because I think it's just important to get this stuff out. I mean, it's one thing to have discussed it in a public here, here, but I'd rather, I'd also like it to be talked about here a little bit as well.
We included it for, as I said, a couple of reasons. That property has had the attention of city staff for a number of years because of code violations. I know there are police calls at least a couple of times every summer because people go in, you know, in the dark, there's no one there. It concerns the neighbors.
Is the school functioning as a school?
It is not functioning as a school. There's a, there's some rental units there, and there's some daycare.
Adult daycare, adult services.
But then the largest, I mean, the building is large, there's a lot of square footage under roof.
I think it's mostly unused.
Mostly just vacant.
So it's marked with signage as a seniors residence, and then part of it is set off by a chain-linked fence.
There are, I believe, nine apartment units there. So it's a non-conforming use to begin with. It was grandfathered in with unification from Prince George's. It was a school when it was in Prince George's. It was grandfathered in as a school. It's zoned, R60 residential on single-family homes on lots 6,000 square feet. It's zoned R60 residential on single-family homes on lots 6,000 square feet or larger. So we already have a bit of a mixed mashup on that, and the property owner has had some problems with the apartments meeting code and some of those things. So staff looked at it thinking the potential for that property is much greater than its current, current, current use, and it is on New Hampshire Avenue, though the address is Poplar. And in, part of including it was thinking, trying to think big, maybe its top and best use is single-family homes there. It's almost eight acres, and the square footage is such that it would make 57 lots of 6,000 square feet each. So that's a pretty significant change in that neighborhood anyway. It also seemed like it was worth thinking about on New Hampshire Avenue as it is, if there would be any desire to think of some kind of mixed-use down the road, a little coffee shop that would serve the immediate residents, that kind of thing. That, of course, would require a zoning change, and the enterprise zone is an unfortunate name because it doesn't do anything about zoning.
Right.
So if we could call it an enterprise designation instead of a zone, it would eliminate some of that confusion. But I think the property itself is, as I said, underutilized, and I think some, some good things could happen there, if only to enhance the existing building and make it usable and make it serve broader needs of the existing community and the immediate residents.
Because the building is old, it's just going to get older, and when a building is not in use, it tends, when it's not properly heated, all that stuff.
Right.
It's going to deteriorate more and more, faster and faster, so that any hope of reusing that building might diminish. I mean, it just, I mean, it just seems to me that this is, this is an 8-acre piece of property in the city that's underdeveloped like this is kind of a novelty for us. I mean, it's, it holds all kinds of potential for good. I mean, it could be a public park for that matter, at least it would be therefore, you know, usable by typical citizens. So I'm wondering if at some point in the city's work program, it wouldn't make sense to kind of do, start, initiate a planning process that would involve the community from day one down there. And it might take a year of meetings and discussions with everything out in the open, so the residents are ahead of the curve, because in this case, I think they felt like they were kind of behind the curve, you know, and understandably so. But something's got, you know, something good could happen there, and it's all kinds of possibilities, including keeping the wooded area wooded area, I suppose.
Right.
And I don't want to get off too far onto that subject, because the topic here is enterprise zones. In your write-up here in the background, references made to the number of jobs created and the amount of capital investments that have been made since 2003. Do we know to what extent the enterprise zone really made the difference in getting those projects built? I mean, or is it possible to say that we know that some of those projects got, came about because of this as opposed to stuff that was probably going to be built anyway, and they just decided to take advantage of it?
I can't say specifically. I know that early on in conversations I have, and I, I know with my colleagues and predecessors, one of the tools we use to say, consider locating your business here, is the list of the possible advantages or possible ways we can partner, and the enterprise zone is always right up there. So I think that and the facade grants that the city has had and are now ending. So I think that it's talked about very early on, as soon as we're in touch with someone who's considering building, relocating, redeveloping, you know, expanding, it's one of the things, first things we put on the table. Is, does that make or break it? My guess is, all other things being equal, it helps bring people here. Of course, things are never really equal. So they're trying to make the determination in the mix of property values and, you know, all kinds of other things.
No, I, I understand the, what you're saying, and I realize that, that this enterprise zone certainly doesn't cost the city anything, right, giving anything up in order to get it. One last question, and that is, is that, is there any, you were talking about 6530 New Hampshire Avenue. Would that project be able in some way gain some benefit out of being in the enterprise zone?
It would. Reinvestment in that property would be eligible for property tax credits through the enterprise zone designation. The, the existing property as is unchanged is not eligible, but if significant money were put into bringing that building up to functionality and new jobs created, then those are all possible uses of enterprise zone tax credits.
I wonder if Landis knows that.
I don't know, but I have a promise to call him tomorrow. It's on your agenda later tonight, so I will add that to my discussion.
Thanks. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I'm glad you're here. I just have a few questions. In the application process, does, does everybody fill out the same application? Because in my ward, you have a lot of small business owners or even small landlords. So are they required to, if I'm Walgreens, am I required to fill out the same application that they would, or is it different?
The application is just a page or two.
Okay.
And I think it's the, I think the process is the same regardless of who the applicant is.
Okay.
But I, it's not, it doesn't appear to be particularly burdensome. I haven't done it, and I haven't walked anyone through it, but I've spoken with Pete McGinnity at the county, who is the overseer of the existing enterprise zone, and he has helped people find their way through it. It is not only Walgreens who has been able to navigate it.
Right, right, right.
So a number of smaller businesses have taken advantage of it.
Now, it seems like mostly restaurants, you know, the small proprietor, use it, because I guess you can get the money back for the restaurant equipment. So is there any way you can put, like, inventory in as a tax rebate, or is that not?
It's intended for property improvements or enhancements. So inventory is your regular day-to-day operation of your business.
So what about?
It's intended for investment.
So what about if, if you're a new tenant and you do tenant improvements?
So the, the catch about tenant improvements is that the property tax credits go to the property owner, and so the advice in the enterprise zone application includes this is that tenants negotiate with their, the property owner to make that part of their lease or a, you know, reduction in their rent in order to accommodate that.
And that's, that's probably not going to happen. So there's no way for tenants, they could get any type of benefit?
They can get the income tax benefit for employing, for new employees.
Right, but only for new employees, and in my ward, I think there are only, like, one, there's only one new employee.
And I think as far as the property improvements, that's, I mean, a tenant who's putting in a significant amount of investment for property improvements should be talking to, should have that negotiated in the lease anyway, whether or not they're doing an enterprise zone application.
Yeah, but landlords don't look at it that way. Landlord's not going to look at, for example, if you're building out a restaurant, landlord looks at the, the piece of real estate as what they're giving you, and because you're going to make all this money, you should be happy, and why should I give you, you know, any more incentives? And any incentives that a landlord would give you would be modest, like some tenant improvements, but a landlord's not going to build out, build out your entire restaurant for you.
Right.
So, but I'm looking at, like, you know, because we have the dollar stores, the 7-11s, not actually in my ward, but they're across the street. How can those tenants, other than, you know, unless you own the property, and very few people own those properties, very few of the tenants own those properties, they're just leased, how can they get any type of benefit other than an income tax reduction because they hire somebody?
I think you're highlighting something we've talked about before, and that is the need to have other tools to use.
Right.
And the enterprise zone doesn't address the specific question you're asking.
And so there's no way we can change the tools in the toolbox for the enterprise zone? It's just set?
Not for the enterprise zone. It may be that we need to be looking for other opportunities.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for being out here tonight. I appreciate the exclusion of the, the school property on Poplar from the zone. As you know, many constituents in Ward Two and Ward Three were very concerned about it. And it made me think about the whole, the, the battle fought, and Councilmember Schultz was particularly involved in this, on, you know, the county zoning plans and the new zone designations and the whole idea of buffering neighborhoods. And I think that's one of the big concerns that came up with people, is if that, if not rezoning, but if development were to be encouraged on that property, rezoning was a possibility, how could you possibly buffer neighborhoods from a property that goes, you know, however, you know, 1,000 feet, I don't know how long the property is, right back into single-family home neighborhoods? And I think that was one of the driving concerns. Another concern was the wooded, wet portion of the property at the very upper end. I know from my colleagues that, Councilmember Schultz, again, talked about the value of the building, that the, the county property tax assessment on the building has dropped from 1.5 million to $300,000.
Wow.
So that's essentially the building being worthless at this point, right? It's less than, almost, well, two-thirds of the homes in Tacoma Park are valued at higher than that.
It's probably less than the demolition cost.
Yeah, that's right.
Which means that the assessment's going to go way up, and it's going to produce a very substantial property tax credit under the enterprise zone.
Right. So the, the property was purchased in '85 for $350,000, so the building is now worth the purchase price. The property is appraised at 8 million, or, yeah, 8.5 million. So the, the community is really interested in sort of engagement discussions, and I've talked about the idea of essentially having some sort of kitchen-table groups that just get together and talk about, you know, visioning informal outside the council or formal city process, just to try to start creating some momentum, as some of my council members talked about. I am particularly interested if there's any chance of convincing the owner to sell to the city, or to the city and the county, the upper portion of the property that's wooded, because it's, you know, it's, I believe, a community resource, you've got open space, you've got that right-of-way that's, I guess, in theory stretches across the property. So I wanted to put that on the table, and I know we've been searching for some ways to use project-open space monies, and this seems like at least a good possibility to try to pursue.
Future.
I, in terms of property taxes and being in arrears, I'm just curious, because this property has apparently some bills from previous years, what happens for anyone in the community if you don't pay your property taxes one year and another year and another year? Does it ever, does anything ever happen to you?
Yes.
Yes, there is. You know, I don't, I was going to research this one to see kind of what steps have been taken so far on it. Frankly, the most common thing when someone is clearly in arrears and isn't going to be able to, to pay is that you take the money when the property sells.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me just add is that if that doesn't happen, eventually the, the jurisdiction can take the property for, for taxes and actually do a tax auction, just take it for the back taxes, sell it, and whatever the proceeds they get from the sale will reimburse the, the arrears, and it gets sold to somebody. That's one, that's, that's what can actually happen. That, that sort of thing's not going to happen in Tacoma Park very often. In a place like the city of Baltimore and the poor areas of the city, it happens all the time, because landlords just literally walk away from the property and say, I never want to look at it again. Whatever you, you know, take it off my hands, it'll be a blessing if you do that. Who knows who the current owner is and what her view on it might be, but it might be that rather than having it auctioned off at tax sale, the city might, from a strategic point of view, say, well, maybe it would be simply better to buy the property for whatever small sum of money it can be gotten for, and then, and then the property maybe could be subdivided so that the back end, the wooded end, becomes a separate parcel, legally a separate parcel, and then you can, that, then the enterprise zone could be assigned to the, the front part of it, and the, and the city, the community could have that guaranteed that that back piece would never be developed, for example. I mean, I'm just jumping off in, you know, into blue sky here, but there's.
If I could suggest, though, if, unless there's a proposal to put the property back into the enterprise zone, this would be a discussion for another night, I think.
Oh, yeah. I realize that, but we're, we're so, we're so ahead of schedule.
Because there has been some interesting discussions in the past about it, and I, and I would love to have that discussion at, at another time. I think, you know, there are some options. None of them are cheap, but.
Right. And I'll, and I'll just add that the property owner came and talked with me, oh, I don't know, nine months ago, something like that, and at that point, she was trying to get the city to provide tax abatement like the county has, where they basically forgave her taxes.
In exchange for?
I'm not quite sure why.
Not being behind on taxes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Roz, for all your work on this, and I appreciate your making the moves that are, are going to keep this thing moving along and keep it on schedule. My question is really about process. This is to submit an application, right? What's, what's kind of the schedule from there on?
I know the application is due April 15th, so the, we're hoping that Tacoma Park will, council will vote on it tonight, the county will vote on it in the next couple of weeks to meet that deadline. I believe it's a.
I think it's automatic once it gets passed.
Yeah, and I, then I think.
But automatic usually has a calendar attached to it.
Right. I think we are to get notification, I'm thinking, two months.
Okay. So by this summer, we should know whether we have the zone or not?
Yeah.
In the zone?
Yeah, I mean, given that it expires the end of June, we should know before.
I think we'll say, we have the designation, let's not say zone.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Would somebody like to move the resolution?
Yes. Move? Or second it?
Move by Councilmember Siemens, second by Councilmember Schultz. Is there any public comment on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes unanimously. Next up is a second reading ordinance awarding a contract to complete installation of the chiller and two air hangar units. We talked about this at first reading. Does the Public Works Director have anything additional you want to tell us?
No new information. Everything remains the same.
It's been moved by Councilmember Siemens. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Smith. Is there any council discussion on this second reading ordinance? Is there any public comment on this second reading ordinance? Seeing none, will a clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Daniels-Cullen.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Williams.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Next up is the, we need to convene as a stormwater board. Would somebody like to move that?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Mayo, second by Councilmember Schultz. All those in favor of sitting as a stormwater board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now also sitting as the stormwater board. First reading ordinance authorizing FY13 budget amendment number three, and first reading ordinance authorizing Stormwater Fund Budget Number Two. We'll take up the budget amendment number three first. We'll take up the budget amendment number three first.
Okay. In the packet, I've gone through and listed a number of proposed amendments to the current fiscal year 2013 budget. I think most of these, you have at least heard something about, although some are fairly minor. In the first category, we have general fund transfers, these are transfers from our general contingency account, which will pay for the purchase of the chairs we're sitting on, but primarily funds a grant to CHEER for $20,000 for the research and services related to diabetes and other health problems affecting residents in Tacoma Park and the adjacent Long Branch neighborhood. This is the project for which they had sought a self, state health enterprise zone grant. And another item from the general fund transfer are transfers from within the police department accounts to help pay for overtime in the correct divisions, uniforms, and badges. One of the things that has happened in the police department is we've had a number of staff vacancies, and we are beginning to hire to fill those vacancies. While the vacancies have been there, it has resulted in some overtime of existing staff to cover court cases and that kind of thing. And then, uniforms and badges are somewhat expensive, and so we've moved it from one division where they had excess funds of uniforms and badges to the right division. In general expenditures, which would come from our general fund unappropriated accounts, we would have appropriations to pay for additional ammunition. One of the things that has happened since the Connecticut school shootings is that the cost of ammunition has gone up quite substantially, about a 15% increase. Guns also, hard to get and are expensive, so we do need to pay for additional ammunition costs, as well as more ammunition, because the training programs that we need to have our police go through, there's more training than had previously been scheduled, and that requires additional ammunition. We also have the cost of screening and testing of the applicants for the police positions that have been vacant. In human resources, we are purchasing cabinets for personnel files that are secure, and also some software which helps tracks applicants, applicant, applications to, for city positions, also helps make our personnel records comply with privacy requirements. You've just voted on the chiller installation, so some of the appropriation will be for the chiller that you've just voted on. And the major effort, the major amount under expenditures has to do with, it's not the major amounts, but it's kind of the major initiative, which would be to open the library and computer center on Sundays beginning May 1st. We're not able to open before then because of a number of vacation schedules and that kind of thing with staff, so it makes more sense to start May 1st. We would open on Sundays. It requires the addition combined between the library and the computer center of an additional full-time equivalent staff, staffing. Then, I'm also proposing maintenance, maintenance services to be provided on Saturday and Sunday cleaning beginning in May. Sufficient funds are available in the library's personnel accounts to pay for the two months of Sunday service, but there would be additional funds for the computer center and for the community center, because, since we don't have gates or other ways to block between the computer center and the community center at this time, we would need to have staffing in our, in, at the recreation desk. And we may very, and we would open the building and, you know, promote that, but part of that is to also, kind of to see how things go. I've also asked for an appropriation of $20,000 to pay for consultant, consultant services for building improvements for this building, which could include the installation of gates that would help give some flexibility to times when we might want this building open, but not necessarily need the computer center and library available, and vice versa. It would also pay to, for someone to help us identify some appropriate wall coverings, floor, floor coverings, and perhaps some alternate doors that are more durable, and there may be some minor building changes to improve public spaces and work areas. It's only $20,000, so it doesn't do a whole lot, but at least gets us going on that, and gives us some sense about what we might look forward in the future, and if there's anything. The big-ticket item on this whole budget amendment has to do with speed camera funds. We are reducing the speed camera fund account by $1,769,223. This is reduced number of violations, cameras being operational for less time than projected, and also due to the legal interpretation that precludes the collection of late fees. It's offset a little bit by the fact that we, when you have a fewer violations, you don't have to pay the contractor to process the tickets as much, and so there is a reduction in paying the consult, the contractor $610,754. I want to indicate to you that this is just, you know, in terms of our projections, you will have next week coming before you a proposal for speed camera corridor designation on a couple places, and so the chief will come before you to ask you to consider a resolution allowing that. It's not going to make a tremendous number of differences, I think, about the number of tickets, it does allow us to slow speeds, especially on New Hampshire Avenue, in, more effectively, especially when the bridge construction's going on over Sligo Creek, gives us a little bit of flexibility about where the cameras are placed, so that it makes some sense. The other thing I want to say is that, before meeting with the Brendel Group this afternoon, I had a very depressing meeting about the speed camera revenue and budgeting perspective, and just kind of a heads up, that it looks like we will not be able to pay for any sidewalk or those kinds of improvements out of the speed camera fund in the, in the next fiscal year. I think we're going to need to be very cautious about that. We do have a number of positions that are funded by the speed camera fund, but I'm just giving you a heads up, we're trying to be realistic about the projections based on our experience so far.
Those positions be funded?
The positions, yes, we would make sure that the, it does cover that, but, but in terms of other capital expenditures, I don't think we're going to be putting them in that account. The other, yes?
Just to sit your on speed cameras.
Sure.
Given the reduced speed camera, this is a question from next week, but maybe one that you can prep for, from the chief. Given the reduction in speed camera revenues, there's no longer any risk that our net speed camera revenues will exceed 10% of total city revenues. That threshold is where the city would have to give excess revenues back to the state. So, are we contemplating adding any new speed cameras? This gives us room to do that without exceeding the 10% revenue threshold. I know that I have constituents who, in a few locations, would like to see speed cameras.
Certainly, if they meet the criteria that the state has for location of speed cameras, it can be considered. I know that two areas where the police chief would love to see some speed cameras due to speeding are areas actually just outside the city limits, which are Carroll Avenue, up towards University, and on some sections of Piney Branch, just adjacent to Tacoma Park, but, but not within the actual city boundary.
Would you, would you ask him maybe to address next week?
I will certainly do that.
Yeah, whether there are any areas within the city boundaries?
And if that's, if there are suggestions by your constituents about locations, you can pass those along to me, and he can find out if they seem to meet the criteria.
Do, are there any, is there anything else on speed cameras?
I have about speed cameras, yes, but I think it's probably more appropriate for next week, we're not approving any new speed cameras, and the, the portable ones you talked about, that's not included in this particular proposal. That's something, again, for, for next week's discussion. Okay, and I just will remind the council that, the thing I want to talk about next week is that the council's previously stated policy was to install speed cameras to reduce accidents.
That's right.
That have, you know, where there are recorded statistics on accidents in an area, and not for speed-related issues or for revenue generation. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz, any other questions?
Yeah, my question deals with the, with what's before the state legislature on the subject of speed cameras, and maybe the mayor knows the answer to this better than you do. And that is, yeah, that with regard to the court issue, the issue that was created by the court, which disallowed imposition of late fees, is that in any way going to be addressed by any of the state legislation that's now before the assembly?
I don't think there's anything that's going to be passed that we'll, we'll address.
There's no solution in sight for that.
Really?
Um, those are the items that are...
I have one more question on speed cameras?
Speed cameras, yes.
Sorry. You just, you mentioned the issue of positions funded by the speed camera fund, and I guess I just wanted to add that I would, I would rather see us start shifting those, some of those positions off the speed camera funds in anticipation that if this year was bad, next year may get worse. And so rather than all of a sudden having, I think it's either four or five positions that are left without funding, I'd rather see us sort of, you know, balance those things, and then in conjunction with Councilmember Siemens' question or comment about safety, at some point, it would be really helpful to see essentially a heat map of where accidents are in the city, which would help us, better inform us about speed camera locations, and that's the sort of information that I think would be helpful to the public, because then they would know where driving safely is particularly important. Thank you.
And I would agree with Councilmembers, Councilmember Mayle's point about looking at the potential for shifting some of the positions.
Yes, one of the things, just, you know, there's no way that I am going to have positions in something that does not look like it's an ongoing fund, so, thanks very much.
Because we, we need to do ADA work.
And we can, right.
Yes, go ahead, and then, now there are no more questions on that.
I don't know if you want anything more on the section that's for the budget amendment number three, the other two points that are included have to do with the stormwater.
Why don't you go ahead and cover those?
Yeah, actually, it's the same thing, it's simply, there, we have a revenue section, which is that we received the $111,000 as a grant from the Maryland Department of the Environment for the Ritchie Avenue Bio Retention Project, which is related to their traffic calming measures, and then the expenditure line will be adjusted to spend the money on the installation of the Ritchie Avenue Bio Retention Project, and that's the Stormwater Management Fund budget number two.
Which we're looking forward to having that work done quickly.
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Smith, you had a question?
Uh, thank you. Two questions, one on the stormwater management, the Maryland Department of Environment, is there any possibility we can get money for the Flower Avenue project through that agency? A grant?
I, I can't answer that right at the moment, I'm not sure. We certainly have been looking at grants for that, and we received a very small one, but, but I will check and see if there's something that's similar to this.
Okay. Other question is regarding opening up the community center when the library and the computer labs are open. Is that going to be ongoing, or is that only for two weeks?
Two months, I mean?
Or two months, I'm sorry.
It's, at this point, I have it as ongoing.
Okay.
I will be looking to the council's direction through the budget process.
And is there, is it possible that we could like run a tally of the number of people that actually use the community center during that time?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure that we can find some ways to do the counts.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions on the budget amendment that includes all of the stuff that is not stormwater? Okay, any public comments on the first reading ordinance authorizing the budget amendment number three? Mr. Lovelace?
Hi, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. One question I have is, why do they raise the price on the bullets for the police and the ammunition in their gun? I mean, I'm not for guns, and I'm not for bullets, but law enforcement does need them sometimes from time to time, and I don't think they should be paid extra for, it should be, the public that pays extra, or, they should be banned altogether for outright use. But the policemen do need them, and I don't know why they have to pay a 15% increase on that. I understand it's because of the Sandy Hook shooting, but we do have to remember, too, that our policemen do need some form of protection, and also to protect our city. But really, I don't know why they raise the price on them for law enforcement, but I do understand why they would, you know, require a greater price for the regular people, because I'm not for that, again, that's gun control, but, and I do like the idea of gun control, but I do like to see it controlled in such a way that the policemen don't have to pay a nominal leg just for their ammunition, because they're going to get stuck in a situation someday, and they're not going to be able to get out of it. And I'd like to know why is that the issue? Thank you very much.
My understanding is that the police buy on the open market, and it's the law of supply and demand, and the, the...
Lots of people who, lots of people who are afraid that guns will be taken away from them, or ammunition will not be available, are buying in bulk right now.
Yeah, so that, I know that there were some cases where the police went out to inquire about some ammunition, and huge quantities of it were just bought up in a day or a week. Any other public comment? Yes?
I didn't catch a motion maker on this.
We'll do that. Who would like to move the ordinance?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. A reminder that on budget amendments, we're required to have a two-thirds majority of the body vote, and so that means that we always need at least five votes for, in the affirmative for a budget amendment, no matter how many people are here. So, would the clerk please call a roll on the first reading of the budget amendment number three?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayle.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, we'll now take up the stormwater fund budget amendment number two, would somebody like to move that?
Moved.
Do it here a second, okay. Moved by Councilmember Grimes, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. Any further council discussion on the stormwater amendment? Any public comment on the stormwater budget amendment? Will the clerk? No, we don't have to do roll call on that, do we? First reading.
You have, yeah, you're still going to have your five.
Yeah. Well, let's do it, just to make sure we have the five.
Good. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayle?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Mayor Williams?
Aye, that carries unanimously. We will now move to the second reading ordinance authorizing execution of the MOA and contribution for feasibility study for 6530 in Hampshire Avenue, would somebody like to move that?
I'll move it.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schultz, seconded by clerk gets to pick. That was a tie. Any council comments on the second reading ordinance? Any public comments on the second reading ordinance? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayle.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Williams.
Aye, that carries...
That was a nay.
That carries five to one.
That was a nay.
That carries five to one. And the final item this evening is the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda, a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a funding agreement with the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee, a resolution providing for reappointment to the Arts and Humanities Commission, and a resolution providing for reappointments to the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Grimes, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. There's a single reading ordinance on there, we will need a roll call vote. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Maal?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Mayor Williams.
That carries unanimously, and we have reached the end of the agenda, and we are adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it.